Thank you. Good evening, this is the Milford Planning Board. Today is Tuesday, February 2nd.
Third.
February 3rd, 2015. And what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion for the minutes.
Motion by Pat, second by John. Minutes, all in favor? Unanimous of four. Number eighty-one, please. Number three.
They're not here.
Do we see anyone?
Nope.
No?
They're not here.
They're not here? Okay, we'll go right down to number four. ZBA special permit, 332 West Street.
Two thirty-two.
Oh, Guerra Realty Inc.
Two thirty-two.
Two thirty-two West.
Let's see. The applicant requests the ZBA special permit to allow for the construction of a 1,030 square foot addition of the existing used car dealership on the subject property. The addition is to accommodate the state inspection of vehicles. The ZBL Section 2.3 used regulation provides for used auto sales as a special permit used within the CC Highway Commercial Zone and the ZBL Section 3.1, 3.1.3 deals with the possible extension of non-conformities. The auto sale aspect of the site will remain unchanged with a maximum of 25 used vehicles to be displayed at any one time. The proposed building addition will be the primary for inspection stations while the outdoor sale display area will now be located to the far southerly paved area of a parking lot. This will make the parking space near the building available for required off-street parking for customers and employees. Therefore, I recommend a favorable report to forward to the zoning board of appeals as site plan will need to be submitted to the planning board for approval on the special permit has been granted by the ZBA, respectfully Larry Duncan. And...
There's no letter.
Well, no. It's only referrals to the ZBA.
It's a... Yeah. All right.
It will ultimately be back here for the site plan.
Exactly. Yes, it will.
The ZBA with the sooner opportunity to review. John Fernandez, here on behalf of Mr. Guerra, who's with us, who purchased this building about a year and a half ago, maybe a little bit more, and has been doing car repair and auto sales up there, ultimately intending to consolidate another location into this location in the near future. There's an inspection station at the other location. He wants to bring it up here. In order to do that, he needs a longer bay. The building is actually not deep enough to do inspections, so he needs a longer bay. And it won't be that color, but as you look at the nice, I'm not sure what color that is...
Maybe it should be.
Maybe.
I like the pink.
We can comment on that, John.
Maybe from the roof, but not from the outside. You would actually drive in through the opening, drive down towards the car, and circle back around in to the location, and that's why the depth will be available to him for the inspection. So it is, since used car and auto repairs by special permit, he's here to extend that right by special permit to the zoning board and seeking a recommendation from this board. And since the building, existing building, is somewhat non-conforming, but the proposed addition is conforming, there's always the question as to whether we need an extension of a pre-existing non-conforming. We belt and suspend it by asking for it anyway. So if it needs it, fine. If it doesn't, then we've asked for it and it's been granted. And so both of those are the requests. Before you and Bob Poxon from Guerra and Hellman can explain the layout of the site.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Thank you. So as I say, this is the existing building here. Currently, they use it for auto repair, auto detailing. There's two large garage doors here, and there's a second one, there's a third one in the rear. There's a concrete slab here, so that some way you can drive through. There's an office space here. So the proposal is to construct this building, 1,030 square feet, strictly for the use of auto inspections. To do that, we need to expand the pavement in this area here so that you could get in and get into the building, but so as not to land lock this concrete slab here, which used to be able to come around and come around the building this way. This was all lawn. We've proposed additional pavement here so we could have the flow of traffic from behind the building out in the realm. The gray you see is the existing pavement. We're not proposing any new pavement except for this area here to get around from the concrete slab in the rear. You can see we can stack the 25 cars that he's permitted to sell. Also, this allows us to put the adequate number of parking spaces necessary to meet the zoning requirement, also, and also provide handicap space right in the front of the building here. We're proposing a little walkway here so that we can meet this requirements for handicap. The building state is within the zoning setbacks, the proposed addition, so there are no variances needed for the addition of the building. And as we said, that the existing building does encroach on the rear setback in a couple of locations, but it's pre-existing non-conforming. Pretty much it. As I said, we comply with open space, green space, setbacks.
I'm just wondering, just tell me exactly, where is that?
One forty.
One forty? Oh, okay. All right. Thanks, John.
Just before, Dr.
Oh, okay. I know where it is now. It was just...
The Mobaco is there and is this.
Oh, okay. All right. I know exactly where you mean.
Crossing Woodcove.
Crossing Woodcove. Okay.
Looks fine to me. I would recommend a favorable report forward to the zoning board.
Motion made by John, send a favorable report to the ZBA. Here, a second. Second by Joe. All in favor? Unanimus of four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, John.
Site plan's on at the next meeting. Because we already...
Yeah. We already had it earlier.
Yep.
Good night, gentlemen.
Nice to see you, John.
See you as well.
All right, moving right along. ZBA special permit, 7 Water Street, David Stone. The applicant requests a ZBA special permit to allow for the change of use from one non-conforming use to another on the subject property. Prior use was the service and repair of fleet vehicles. The proposed use will be used, will be for the storage and repair of the applicant's private vehicles. ZBL Section 3.1.4 provides for the change from one non-conforming to another. Auto-related uses are not permitted within the OR Office Residential Zoning District within which the subject property is located. The prior auto-related use was made non-conforming when the area was rezoned to OR in 2010. The proposed change of use will have no effect on the exterior of the site from its current condition. Therefore, I recommend a favorable report forwarded to the zoning board of appeals. However, given the circumstances, the site plan will not need to be submitted to the planning board for approval once the special permit has been granted by the ZBA. Respectfully yours, Larry Duncan.
This is for private use, sir.
Yeah.
That's my understanding. He'll have to come back and do it all again some other year if he decides he wants to take in other vehicles, or if he decides he wants to keep it for his own use but have a Class II license out of there, or whatever. It's all got to come back.
But in present configuration, it's just for his private use.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
A motion made by Pat, seconded by...
Just sit down.
Seconded by John. All in favor? Unanimus of four. ZBA variance special permit for 345 Purchase Street, Simone Camaro. The applicant requests a ZBA variance and our special permit as necessary to allow for the reconstruction and addition of the side entrance to a single-family dwelling on the subject property. The proposed eight-foot-by-16 feet addition will result in a 16.5-foot setback from the sides, from the side southerly property line, 20 feet required in the RC zone. SBL Section 3.1.3 provides for the extension of non-conforming structures by special permit. However, the proposed addition will encroach even more into the required side yard, thus necessarily a vacancy as well as a special permit. The lot is non-conforming as to area, width, and footage. In addition, the side property lines are not perpendicular to Purchase Street. Therefore, I recommend a favorable report to be forwarded to the zoning board of appeals. Okay, Bob?
This is the existing house, the 345 Purchase Street. You can see it in your favorite color, pink, here. What's happened is the homeowner has a problem with this section of the house here where the sill, they determined that the sill is rotted, and a good portion of this wall has to be reconstructed. So she's, and this is a little breezeway here. So what she's looking at during that time is to expand her kitchen out eight feet in this direction and 16 feet, basically just taking this line of the house, pushing it back, and taking this line of the house and extending it forward and having the two lines meet to create this eight-by-16 kitchen addition. The area that it's going in now is currently all pavement, and it pays right up to the house, which is probably why it's still rotted out. And, you know, so that would be, the pavement would be removed, and then there'd be a building put there. So this would create a setback of 16 and a half feet where the required setback is 20 feet. However, because it's in an RC district, now the RC district is a 45,000 square foot lot. The lot is an existing 25,000 square foot lot with 100 feet of frontage. If it were in an RB zone, the side yard setback would only be 15 feet, and it would meet, it wouldn't even be this issue. But because this is a pre-existing lot, which is less than the area for the zone, it's got to comply with that 20-foot side yard setback, and so it's a hardship for, you know, to try to make that meet. So that's pretty much it.
If you try to square up the house, what was there previously, or...
It was driveway brought right up to the, right up to the house. This pavement went right around.
Oh, it did.
So the house jetted out?
This is a little breezeway right here, and it came here and then went in like this, and then the driveway went right up to the house over in here.
Oh, okay.
Right around the back and around like that.
That's what I was having a difficult time with.
It's not replacing a structure, it's just heading on.
I couldn't tell where the breezeway was, that's why.
Yeah, the breezeway's this little part in the front, in the pink, you see, and then they're going to add to the back, just extending this and then extending that out.
If you're going to use...
Magenta.
Perhaps you should have used a different color to show.
You're going to call it magenta.
I don't care what color you call it, it just would have been a little more easily recognizable if perhaps you used yellow in the area that you were trying to do.
Or blue.
Do you have a motion, Pat?
Yeah, I think so. Sorry, favorable.
Motion made by Pat, seconded by Joe. Send a favorable report to the ZBA.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You have to vote. You didn't vote, go through the vote, you just did the second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought... Thank you, Joe. All in favor?
Yes.
Unanimus of four. Getting ahead of myself today, Joe.
Sounds good.
Okay. Moving right along. ZBA special permit, 20 Beaver Street, Sal's Garage. The applicant requests a ZBA special permit to allow for used vehicle sales and repair on the subject property. The proposed use will consist of one repair bay and sale office, and the outside display area for the maximum of six used cars at any one time, and will be in addition to the existing seven-bay muffler shop on the property. ZBL Section 2.3 provides for the sale and service of used vehicles by special permit within the IC industrial zone. The proposed used vehicle use, the proposed used vehicle use will require four parking spaces, and the existing muffler shop requires 16 spaces for a total of 20 off-street parking spaces. The site plan dated 12/29/14 provides for 20 parking spaces in addition to the six sale display spaces. Therefore, I recommend a favorable report to forward to the zoning board of appeal. A site plan will be needed to be submitted to the planning board upon assurance of the special permit by the ZBA, respectfully Larry Duncan, planner.
Larry, is this the former Midas, Midiki?
Well, it's still there. This site has had a couple auto-related uses in that north bay.
I just never heard of Brook Street, so I'm just confused. That's, that's... Behind Pago.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
There's a Brook Street.
Oh.
Really?
Oh, I know that. Oh, for God's sake.
That's that old right-of-way in there is actually Brook Street.
I thought it was part of their driveway, to be honest with you.
No, it's actually a street there. It got cut off when 495 went through.
Okay. Thanks, Joe.
But Sal's garage will stay where it is on South Main Street, but as you may recall, a few months ago, he got denied, and you had recommended denial, on adding sales to the South Main Street site.
Didn't make sense.
So he found another location where he could have the sales, and this is it. But he'll keep his repaired garage at the South Main Street site.
Okay. Larry, what's going on in the southeast corner there? Those existing four spaces being removed, is that what the deal is?
Yeah, they're...
They're going to be transferred against the building?
Right, they're to be restripped the other way around.
That first, that, well, they have an extra, that first space is going to be awful tough to get into, what they label as one. I mean, not that that has anything to do with the special permit question, but...
I never knew that was...
Well, I think...
I'm not sure that space one is usable.
Well, I think they're, the muffler shop can assign their staff to park in those other areas. Because typically, the customers are outside the front doors, and then when they back the cars...
Yeah, I'm just worried about it in whether it's anybody just trying to get into that space, looking at it. I don't...
Yeah.
It's going to be awful tight. That's a question for another day anyways.
It has been approved that way previously, so, given partially the fact that it was a tight site, so...
Do I hear a motion?
Well, that's a change, though, isn't it? I mean, right now, there's four up against...
Well, I don't, I don't think so. I think that may be a quirk of re-upping an old site plan.
You'll have to come back for a site plan if you're successful, Joe.
Yeah.
All right. Do I hear...
Send a favorable to the ZBA.
Motion made by Joe, send a favorable to the ZBA. Seconded by John. All in favor?
Yes. Thank you.
Four in favor. Unanimous. Okay, number eight. ZBA variance, 120 to 128 Midway Street, Barlow Signs. The applicant requests a ZBA variance to allow for the construction of a 320 square foot, eight feet high, internally illuminated, freestanding sign on the Beaver Street footage of the subject property, frontage, sorry, frontage of the subject property. The maximum height allowed for such signs in commercial and industrial zone is 30 feet. No overall signage plan has been submitted to determine the calculation required by Section 3.9.2 sign size restrictions of the zoning bylaw. It is therefore unclear what the number, type, and size of sign currently exists on the property, including the existing freestanding sign near the Midway Street entrance to the plaza. It should also be noted that the maximum allowable height for buildings in the IB zone is 60 feet. The purpose, the proposed sign will exceed the maximum allowable height for signs by 50 feet, and the maximum allowable height for buildings by 20 feet. Therefore, I recommend an unfavorable report to forward to the zoning boards of appeals. So...
There we go.
For the record, my name is Donald Reed. I'm a senior designer at Barlow Signs, and with me tonight is Grant Michael, and he is the account executive for this project. So perhaps there may be some questions that you could ask him, or things that I may not know. What we're proposing is a couple of sign changes to the site. As you may know, the site pretty well, it's a very large site with approximately 600 feet of frontage on Beaver Street and on Midway Street. Our first, the first part of this proposal is to rehabilitate the existing sign by removing all of the sign panels and leaving the steel, and then building a new sign that will look approximately like this. There may be some aesthetic changes to the pole covers, but essentially, that's the sign. It's just basically a box sign that's fitted down over the existing poles, and it allows spaces for tenant panels, so that it's a, it's not kind of an ungainly thing like the existing sign, but very well-contained and much more professional-looking, we think. And the existing sign is 327 square feet, as the sign that we are proposing brings it down a bit to 210 square feet. That's kind of cut and dry, I think. Before I continue, I do want to respond to the note from the planner about, we are in the process of doing a complete inventory of the site so that we have a good, comprehensive plan when we go forward from here, so that we can make a positive report to the ZBA as to actually what's there and what we're proposing. So the second part of the proposal is a sign that would be located approximately in this part of the site, so would be fairly adjacent to Route 495 and visible going both ways. The advantages to having a sign like this are very extreme in that this site, from my understanding, has been struggling for a while to maintain a customer base as well as tenants in the buildings. There are some proposals on, that are in the planning stage, to add some new retail spaces, which would be, of course, beyond my purview here, but the overall idea is to rehabilitate the retail site, and one of the main cornerstones of that would be this pylon sign. And let me, let me show you the next page here. What we've tried to do is kind of simulate what this proposed sign next to 495 would look like. What we've done here is we've taken one of our crane trucks and extended the ladder up to 60 feet to the very top of it, so that you can see, here's the, again, the ladder truck over here, and here's our guy, Brave Soul, up there. So here is the sign that is proposed, 60 feet to the bottom, then the tenant directory here, and then a smaller panel up here that advertises the Milford Crossing. One of the parts of the design process in a project like this is to determine how big a letter we need, and that kind of drives how big the sign should be, because there's no point in putting a sign out there, spending lots and lots of money doing a sign like this, if the motorists can't read the sign. So it's just a question of getting the sign big enough, and, you know, we understand that in doing that, that we exceed some of the zoning requirements in the area, but we would go before ZBA and request relief based on the hardship qualifications that exist here, which I won't go into hardship now, that's, that'll be somebody else's problem. But what we want to do is to show the planning board the scope of our intent here. Now, the difference between Exhibit D and Exhibit E is that E shows the sign 60 feet to the top, and according to our surveys, that really wouldn't do the trick, that there would be blockage somewhat from this angle. Of course, being that this is just a static image, you can't see what it looks like coming up the road, but apparently, coming from the other way, it would be, that is, heading north, it would be pretty much obscured. So we felt the best thing to do is to get it up to 60 feet to the bottom and propose it that way. Is there any other points that I wanted to make? I think that, I think that kind of covers it. What do you think?
Basically, my clients are the owners of the property, and they've been having, I think they bought the property in 2013 or so, they've been having trouble getting tenants to come into the plaza. The Kmart has moved out, there's like Bugaboo Creek, the gym, and some stuff, but they have a big, wide-open space over there. And really, what they're trying to do is, through using signage, start to get some interest in tenants and stuff like that, to use that sign off the highway as a competitive advantage over some of the other tenants. Like your exit up off of Route 85 has got a really good line of sight. You come from up from the hill, when you're coming down, you can see like the Sports Authority, you can see that's a very commercialized area. When you drive further down the road, this plaza, it's really hidden off the side of the road. You can't really see what's down there. It's kind of not as commercial down there. There is the plaza across the street, it's got quite a few tenants in it and stuff like that, and they're really trying to draw just more traffic to that area. They feel as though if they can do something off the highway, it allows them to educate those, you know, your everyday drivers, educate the people going by of, you know, what's down there, and also not help just that plaza, but also the plaza or any businesses around there, there's a mobile station area, so anything to drive more traffic down that way. As far as the heights, you know, the 80 feet will help it be seen by both directions. We realize, you know, that might be an issue, some of the heights and stuff. The 60 feet is kind of, you know, a drop back where we think it'll still be, you know, effective from one side, but it's, you know, if you're going to ask for, you know, the best-case scenario, yes, the best-case scenario, we can, you know, work from there. There are, I think currently five tents, they are looking at adding a couple more retailers in there, and also possibly redoing some of the facade and kind of just completely dressing up this, but they're looking at branding it. The first site that we kind of described, we actually have a permit for that sign, it's been approved. We just haven't done anything yet, because what they're trying to do is they're trying to like brand this site. A lot of these outlet centers, or these power centers, are trying to create a brand for their customers, so they create like an image of an overall experience, and they're really trying to bring some life back in this plaza. And really, for them, it starts with this sign. I mean, I don't know, you know, what else they have in plan, but this was their first step in that process. So if you have any questions about the stuff, but I mean, usually, the size is based off, like he says, being able to read it from a highway speed, make it effective. It's not going to have a ton of stuff on it, you're basically going to see, you know, a logo up on there to make people aware of what's down there. So that's all. If you have any questions, we can...
Well, that's a big change from what everyone else has to conform to, you know, and so we, we just either recommend a favorable or unfavorable to the zoning board at this point. So I'll open it up to my people on board. Does anyone have a comment?
No, I think my only comment is that I wouldn't be comfortable with it at all. I mean, I don't, for as much as I think this board wants to be as pro-business as possible, I think the impact of the town of Milford would be severe granting something like this. You know, it's great to be a site, I can see the hotel coming in next, I can see everybody else going down the stream, and I certainly don't want to turn that area into the Route Nine field. It's not, and I don't think this town ever wanted it to be, and that type of signage, to me, is not acceptable in the town of Milford. So I couldn't, you know, I definitely put a motion to send an unfavorable to the zoning board of appeals. We've had, we've had issues with the signage as is, and the fact that we think the signage in Milford is maybe more than we wanted to now allow for to send any type of recommendation that would grant something greater than... that would grant something greater than that, I think is sending the wrong field to the zoning board, considering this board has looked at trying to make signs smaller in the town of Milford.
So there's a motion made by Joe to send it unfavorable to the ZBA. Do I hear a second?
Yeah, I'll second it. The only other comment that I'll say to you is, I don't think the sign is going to make or break that plaza, I think that there's other issues in that plaza that need to be addressed, and the sign is, I think, the least of your concerns, which is my opinion. But I got to tell you, I think 60, 80, I wouldn't go with 60, I'll put it that way, so I think 80 is more than a stretch, and I wish you luck, but I don't see it happening.
Right.
So...
Seconded by Joe. All in favor of sending it unfavorable to the ZBA? unanimous at four.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, number 13.
If we could skip to 13, Bonnie was unable to be here, so...
We're going to go right to number 13 on our hearing here.
Yeah, the Mylars aren't ready for number nine, and...
What?
No Mylars for nine.
No, no, oh, okay.
And then 10, 11, and 12, we can talk about when Bonnie can be here, next time, hopefully.
Okay, number 13, possible zoning text adendum amendment for the farmer's market uses.
At your last meeting, I distributed a revised draft, we had been working on this, Jen Demont from the Farmers Market Group, and Rick Valani and I had been working on this for a day or two, anyway. So we finally came up with a draft that was close, I had sent that to Jen, and she fleshed out the list of uses that would be considered produce under the proposed definition, so that's what you have in your packet. Since the last meeting, I'd collected some comments from various members, but before we get into all that stuff, I thought you'd rather have some kind of a presentation from Jen that we really didn't have last time, because we just distributed it. So it's up to you, it's your pleasure.
Can I just ask a quick question before she gives her presentation?
Sure.
You just have to help me out, and the reason why I'm asking the question before you give your presentation, hopefully you'll answer it. I'm struggling with some of the uses, because when you call a farmer's market, and I'm looking at some of these uses, I must tell you, I'm having a problem formulating in my mind that it's a true farmer's market with some of these uses. And again, I just wanted to at least let you know some of the struggles I'm having, so hopefully you can address it, if not, then we may have to look at...
No, I'd love, I mean, it's part of working through it, I mean, we, as Larry said, we've been working on it for...
Sometime.
Right.
So, you know, we're getting there, you know, and...
Well, that's important, because we all, yeah...
It's a working draft to a certain extent, you know.
So why don't...
We would like your input, that's why we're here, and, you know, why we're doing what we're doing.
So why don't you give us your presentation and let us know what this is all about, and go from there.
I am going to...
Go from there.
Yeah, I do have some stuff for, this is all of our, I will apologize that I'm going to be slightly not as vocal as I would be. My mother passed away on Saturday, so pretty much everything I have is here.
I'm sorry to hear that.
Versus something that would be much more visual. What we, I can give it out to you, it goes through our regulations, our, the state regulations, or some of the state regulations. I think I gave you this, Larry, I emailed it to you, if I didn't...
Yep.
Sorry?
Is that next to you?
I have to make sure I have mine. Yeah, I did. Just so you can see that, you know, to a certain extent, that's why we had an issue with the list of things, because we needed to cover a lot, because there are things that are, we don't offer now, and we may never offer, but they are things that a lot of other markets do offer. We do have a very stringent set of rules and regulations that we abide by and make our vendors abide by. They have to apply not only through us, but also through the Board of Health, you know, it's vetted through our entire committee, and we've had, we've told people to leave, you know, in the middle of a season when things don't work out. So it's not like we just hand them carte blanche and say, here you go, sell what you want. Everything that we, or all the vendors that are in our market are either producing something themselves or have grown it, or are providing a service. There's only, we only had one vendor last year who was a third party, and it was a third party who sold organic and green cleaning products, which is something that we just don't have a local vendor for. There's no one in our area who makes local soaps that you can use as detergent, and if they are, they're just not interested in coming, or they're too busy, or there are multiple markets on Saturdays, so, you know, it's tough. You know, the first year, we only had 12 vendors, we managed to get up to 21 last year, and we still haven't been able to get meat and cheese, which are the two things we really, really want, just because it's so difficult. And it's not only part of having that, but we, you know, for meat and cheese, it has to be USDA-approved, which means that, you know, there are fewer and fewer people doing it. But, you know, I included our bylaws as well as our articles that we used to incorporate through the state of Massachusetts. All of that also was approved by the USDA through, we applied to offer SNAP and WIC at the market, so we had to be an approved market through the USDA as well as the state of Massachusetts. At the back, there are a couple vendor lists from local markets, Hoppington, Westboro, Franklin, and Natick, I believe are the ones. And if you look at the lists, it's pretty consistent with what we have. And, I mean, you know, if there's something in there that you're uncomfortable with, I'll be more than happy to look at it with you. I mean, I, we had to go big versus going small, because if this is, you know, I'd rather work down than run into an issue halfway through the season where we have to say, absolutely not, we can't do this, and then have to go through the process of amending that particular part of the bylaw, that then takes another, you know, it's not like a SNAP decision where we can just say, oh yeah, let's, never mind, we can do that. It's something that, and all of our, you know, like I said, all of our vendors are from within 50 miles. They don't all grow their own produce, because there are some things you can't grow in Massachusetts. I would love to be able to grow bananas here, and for the banana bread, but we just don't have the right climate, you know, but we do make sure that we are going to offer as local as we can, and if it's not locally grown, it's locally made, and if it's locally made, that it's locally made within regulations, both by us and by boards of health, so that there's nothing ever going to get to you that isn't safe. You know, so, I mean, that's where we are.
So I just have a couple of questions myself. Now, last Gau were before us also, and you had your place, Farmer's Market was held on Dilla Street, correct? And on that street, what was it that you sold there? Was it strictly fruits and vegetables, or, could you just tell me what was there?
Last year, we had, we had produce, we had four farmers, we had goat soap and goat milk products, there was bread, there was zucchini bread, there was Eric Sharper Edge, who was there, who did knife sharpening services, we had Many Feet Farm.
Okay.
I'm trying to think of the whole list.
I just wanted, like, an overview of what was there.
Yeah, I mean, we had Many Feet Farm, she's out of Grafton, she has alpacas, and so she sold the alpaca yarn as well as the alpaca manure, and the finished products that you make from the fibers, like, you know, hats and socks. And if you haven't had alpaca socks, you need to get some, they're the best thing in the world for this, I'm telling you, your feet will never, ever get cold.
Thank you.
But, I mean, you know, we had a food truck that was local who came out, and that was great, because they used the produce from the market in the food truck. You know, so like, they'd come in the morning, they'd buy the corn from Fairmont Fruit Farm, they'd make a corn and black bean and quinoa salad, which was, you know, it was really nice to be able to get everybody working together, you know, so...
That's good. That's good. So...
The location worked out pretty well for you?
Yeah, it was, it was not bad. And we didn't get that, the traffic, despite what we were all very afraid of, was less... Yeah, it was definitely manageable. I mean, it's certainly not optimal, because it is a bad turn out to the left.
It is.
Even though you can try to prevent that, you know, you can tell people not to turn left, they still turn left, you know.
Do you want to say something, Larry?
Well, just, yeah, let me step back a little bit to more of the procedural stuff and the clunky, boring stuff that we've been, that we've been working on. They're really two different tracks. There was all of the zoning stuff and town meeting schedules and, you know, the zoning mechanics and how you make it work, which resulted in the draft that you see, but also what played into that was the possible locations. When we first started talking, oh, many months ago, we were looking only at the Memorial School site, which is on Walnut Street, so that was here on the south side of Walnut Street in an RA zone. So the original chart that we come up with to at least allow the use in that zone by special permit meant that 10% of the town was going to be potentially open to having a farmer's market, which precipitated the idea of having a minimum lot size of five acres, because there were only two or three sites in the RA zone that were that big, and one of them magically happened to be the Memorial School site. So that would limit a potential farmer's market in the RA zone to the school site itself, to the Portuguese Club, and then I think the other parcel was the Coronet parcel at the end of Carroll Street, which the town owns, and it's way out of the way and unlikely to be used, but at least there are locations in town where that kind of use could work. But then, over the months, they were also looking at the potential of the high school site near the main entrance, between the main entrance and the front parking lot along the south side of North Vine Street. Well, that's in an RB zone, so now you have 10% plus another almost 30, so you've got over 35% of the town potentially available by special permit for a farmer's market, and it's all residentially zoned. So that's how we ended up getting down to more of the particulars of the zoning mechanics, because we, I was able to frame a structure where you'd have the special permit allowable, generally speaking, but then you'd have some special regulations under Section 3 that actually determined what it was and how it was regulated, and that's what you had in your draft. So in the process, we went over what a timeframe might be, looking at a Maytown meeting, and working back from that, the Maytown meeting should be on the 18th of May, our public hearing for a zoning amendment should be on the 21st of April. That would leave you one more meeting day before town meeting in case you needed to continue the hearing.
Okay.
Then continually working back toward today, to have a public hearing on April 21st, I would need to get the notice out the 31st of March, and then we'd already talked about meeting twice in March, so, or three times in March, so we'd have one, two, three, four meetings.
Before you back into the dates, I mean, can we...
But that's why we're, that's why we're starting so early, so that we have four...
We have ample time.
Four meetings to talk about it.
Can I ask you some questions?
Yeah, I'm going to open it up to, you may, go ahead, ahead.
Dilla Street, I'm assuming it's not ideal for you. So, in a perfect world, where do you want to be?
Either any of the schools over here, preferably either Stacy, Stacy or Memorial. They're both on the same...
Are you looking to be in the parking lot, or are you looking to be on grass?
Preferably on the grass, and in both sections, I talked to Lisa Burns from Memorial. I would utilize in the center of the bus loop.
Which is pavement?
No, it's, the bus loop itself is pavement.
If you have 21...
And you could, you...
You're close, okay.
Between that center and running along the sides, there's plenty of room. On the other side of Stacy, it's the same kind of thing, you have that area in the bus loop, or you can shift over to the area in front of the old school versus the new school. So there's grass on either one, you know, if we had to, we'd go to Milford High. Milford High is, obviously has optimal grass, it's just so far off from the beaten path.
That's why I asked you ultimately where you'd like to be. For some of you to consider, if you're going to utilize town property, whether it be the school department, the parks department, whomever, I don't know, but if your plan is to utilize grass, I think you're going to need to incorporate part, and part of this is your long-term maintenance, because inevitably, after multiple weeks...
I think that's in there, I think that's, I think it's, it says that we have to do provisions, so it would, but... And it's in 316-4, I think it is?
Yep, site restoration.
Yeah, seasonal duration, I know what's in there.
Yeah, it's the last sentence, any site restoration necessitated...
So, I mean, we would certainly address that, that would, I would never imagine to...
I think you're going to need to work that out more definitively, with either the school department or the parks department, because obviously, there's going to be maintenance items, because if you're going to be there several weeks, inevitably, the grass is not going to be there towards the end.
Yes.
So I'm not asking, nor do I expect you, that at the end of every year, you're going to be planting sod there, that's not what I'm asking you. But something needs to be addressed, because ultimately, kids...
Absolutely.
You know, so we have to be aware of, you know, that we all have to be good neighbors, so to speak.
Absolutely, and we had a...
I'd like to see some sort of agreement, if you will, with the parks department, if, just aside, you know, I just think you need to show what everyone's, because your impression of restoration and theirs could be totally different, and I don't want to be refereeing the middle, nor do I want letters back to us how foolish we were and we didn't take into consideration other boards, so I just want to kind of get that out there.
No, no, I...
You're right, it is in there, but it's in there as a sentence, and it's not really saying anything.
I have no problem with that, and Mike Brashani was involved in, he was one of the meetings at least, so I'm sure that he and I could hash out...
That's all, I'd just like to see something that's...
Yeah, I don't see any...
So what about a letter?
I don't think we need to worry about that now, it comes back to us as part of special permit, we would require that as part of special...
Yeah, that would be what they would submit with their application, but what happened to the other site on Walnut Street, between the basketball courts and the loop?
I don't care about which site specifically right now, it doesn't matter.
Well, no, but I was just saying, in terms of the location, I thought that was the location. That's what you, you had told Rick and myself, that that was the location.
We talked about that, we talked about Memorial, and then we talked about Stacy, and then when I talked to Lisa Burns, she said it would work out, you know, there was the only, there was only one day, it's something like, I think it's either the week before or the week after, or our very last week, where they have Family Day, but we even talked about potentially working it into the market where, you know, like, you could do a little bit of both.
Sure, but the specific location of being in the grassed area on the south side of Walnut Street between the basketball court before you get to the loop driveway and not being in the loop driveway at all, that was the site on Walnut Street that we talked with the town administrator about.
That was one of the three, it's not, it's not, I'm not throwing it off the board, I'm just saying that I spoke with Lisa, I spoke with Superintendent Trembley, it was, it seemed, I mean, it's not off the table, I mean, this is something...
No, I was just curious where it went.
It's certainly not off the table, we did talk about it, there were, there were three, when we talked, there was actually also talk of the site across the street in the parking lot, since that was completely shaded, so that the pavement, but that's not going to work out, because I...
It's all paved.
Well, no, it's also, it's also all shaded, so worst-case scenario, I would certainly, if that, if you said to me, that's the only place you can go, and I would say, okay, that's not, that's, you know, but, I mean, there's no...
I'm trying to get a true sense of what you're looking for, so that we don't have to do this year and year...
I don't want to do this again, trust me. I don't want to do this ever, ever again.
Obviously, when we look at Memorial School...
If we can avoid it...
But I think, I think we've got to face the facts, that any of those places are within the realm, and it may not be this group or this particular person two years from now that's leading this. So this is a zoning change, and again, we've got to think about this as it relates to anybody that could come forward in the future, and that sort of leads to my major concern is that this is a commercial use in a residential zone.
Right.
I don't know where the others are or not, but the biggest issue... I don't know where the others are or not, but the biggest issue I have is a commercial use in a residential zone. I like the idea of a farmer's market and I, and I wouldn't necessarily throw the whole thing out, but I think a lot of the uses to me put an impact on the people that are gonna be affected on Walnut Street or Fountain Street or Spruce Street that I'm not sure they signed up for. And they have every right not to have signed up for it, they're in a residential zone. And then I think that's important to go back to. So, I believe that, you know, I would support it, but I would not support it with the uses that are here because I think the impact of those people is much greater than they need. I like the idea of the town having a farmer's market, a true farmer's market, vegetables, fruits. I'll go a little bit further, but, you know, I'm looking at it and I'm seeing wine and craft beer. That won't happen anyways because it's not allowed.
It, well, I mean, you know, it's, it's.
We don't want it to be a fair.
You know, jewelry.
No, no, and I completely understand.
With wine and cigarettes and, and, I mean.
But see, we have, I mean, and, and, but you, and I'm not dismissing any of what you're saying. I completely understand what you're saying. But like from our end, there's, we have local wineries and, I mean, you know, so I can't, I mean, there are, but, I mean, there's.
You're not gonna get those on school property anyways, they, it's not allowed, so.
But I mean, for right now, if, if we, if you, we're not gonna allow you in RA and you're going to be in, only the districts we're allowed in currently. If we say only these things, it kind of limits it as well.
Right.
You know, and if we stayed at the water company and, you know, which is really not optimal, but is at least doable temporarily, it's gonna affect us there as well. So, it's, I, I, I'm trying to find and hopefully we can come to something that's in the middle where I understand exactly what you're saying. I don't want to impact residents in any negative way, which like, it kind of goes back to why we were leaning towards Spruce Street, on the Spruce Street side because it's, the library's closed in the summer, it doesn't impact any traffic. It keeps it towards the commercial end of Spruce Street without pushing it up there. It doesn't have people going through neighborhoods because if you go to Walnut Street, you're driving down School Street. You're driving down Parks, you're driving down all those.
And you're parking everywhere.
If you're on Spruce Street, you're closer to just coming right off Main Street, right there, parking stuff, you know, turn around, go, you know. So, like, so there's, that's kind of why it would be, and I'm not dismissing Walnut Street. I'm not saying it's not possible, but that's kind of the thought process of if you move it this way.
Yeah.
You know.
We're gonna have to finally have a final destination.
Right, exactly.
You know, but it's residential.
Yeah, it is.
And you need, you, you know, the, the final destination has to be set in stone. You know, it's gonna be here.
Yep.
And, and that's what.
No, no, we can't do that, Lena, that's, that's, that's got nothing to do with it.
Yeah, it's.
Because at the end of the day, all of those, all of those spots are available.
I know that.
Next year, they may decide they don't want to. This, this is a zoning amendment that makes any of them possible. So, we've got to think of any possible use and what we would allow at that location. And they, they can say they want to be at Spruce Street and we say, well, we'd allow a little bit more there. Next year, they could come back and water street if we.
Because if there's. No, it's allowable use of, and again, fundamentally, I, I have some, some problems with some of the, to your point, Joe, and then I started earlier on, that there's just certain things I don't consider.
I understand.
Viable, and I don't consider them truly the essence of what a farmer's market should represent.
You're right, Joe.
That's all.
I wasn't thinking that long those lines.
I mean, I, you know, I, I, I look at, I, and I understand, but I worry about even products that would normally be considered if you talk about the meats or the seafoods and that those have to have refrigerated vehicles and then you're putting those next to a residential zone. And those people are there, you know, they've been there and they didn't sign up for this. We're changing zoning on them and, and, and so I don't think that's really fair to those people that are along there. You know, I wouldn't, and, and those people are gonna be there at seven o'clock in the morning on a Saturday morning in order, in order to get there, set up and, and, and be ready. So, I, that, that bothers me. I don't, I don't think I want it, if I were living there, I wouldn't want to be impacted that way. And again, I'm saying I, I like the idea of a farmer's market, but I, but for me to like it in this zone, I think it has to be much more narrowly defined.
You mean less encompassing?
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
Whichever way you want to look at it. More defined as in to which we would allow.
Well, one, one thing for, for everybody to remember is that whatever would get adopted, if something like this gets adopted, all of the definitions, all the requirements pertaining to farmer's market are only gonna get triggered in one of these special permit situations because that's the only thing that gets you to this new section three point sixteen or whatever the number turns out to be by the time it gets adopted. What triggers that is the fact that there's a farmer's market looking to go in an RA or an RB zone via special permit. So, as long as a farmer's market's in an otherwise commercial or industrial zone where it's allowed anyway, all they're looking at is site plan approval again, like they've done the last two times, either here at town hall or at the water company or some other site in those zones. So, this stuff isn't going to apply to a farmer's market in one of those other zoning districts at all. It's only in the context of this, which is the whole point. I had passed out the, the list of, of changes that people.
Saying we have, we have time, I guess, and I didn't want to be, wanted to give you the idea of what the flavor of the board was per se, certainly Mayan, but I, I didn't want to go through and, and cut out certain things that may be critical. Run a farmer's market and don't know which ones. I just think looking at some of these and I think listening to, to us, that, you know, where we're concerned, some of these I, I think we could probably get away with and not have them in a farmer's market. I would rather not have it be necessarily us that went through and just, and just cut those things out, but I would, I would like to have you go back through and, and see which ones you think are critical to running a farmer's market and which ones would be nice to have because I, I think it's gonna be very difficult, as it's currently constituted, to at least get this board's recommendation for favorable to town meeting. And, I mean, obviously, you, you could take whatever you want to town meeting, but I think it, it becomes much more, much difficult to get town meeting acceptance with an unfavorable from the planning board.
Well, yeah, and that's why I would prefer to work with you to come up with that list. Like, I mean, like, I, I don't know, I didn't see this until right now, so you'll have to.
Well, they didn't either.
I, yeah, so I.
We did either, so.
You know, like, so, I mean, like, some of the things that are in and out.
Let me explain what this is. This, this is a compilation of, of all of the various comments from the various members that, that I'd gotten since last meeting. And I originally was going to make a list under each member's name, but they were so duplicative and then it was so difficult to go back and find the stuff in the, in the text.
Yeah, and it makes, it makes.
So, what I did was go through and, and, and show and double strike out the things that, that they had had concerns about and also show in, in italics, underlined, the things that we talked about in different individuals and myself separately, about whether or not they should be added. So, what you're seeing is, is a list that's gotten incorporated into your last draft just to try to, to relate it directly to the draft itself and then show what that would look like as, as a revised definition. And I also stuck in at the bottom a footnote as to what the current definition for flea market is because they're prohibited everywhere in town regardless of the zoning district. So, so that's how this came about is.
Yeah, and, and I mean.
This is really a list, if you can, can't tell by looking.
Well, it's, it's, yeah, I mean, I, I mean, like, you know, like, for me, like, and I'm not, I'm not picking out on anything, but like, we had fantastic success with the community service organizations that came out, you know, I mean.
Could you define that?
Yeah, like, we had the Greater Milford Community Chorus come out, we had the Citizens from Milford come out.
We had the Friends of the Library come out.
Friends of the Milford Library come out. They, they all came out at our, we have a community booth that, that is free to the community organizations and they can come and, I mean, they tell us what they're gonna do, it's, you know, it's, but it's, that's, that's the point of this, above and beyond just food. It's getting the community together and all of them had fantastic turnout. I mean, the community chorus did a membership drive, or not a membership drive, like, you know.
Yeah, membership drive.
Membership drive right before their season started so that they could.
I joined because of it.
Right, that, I mean, but that's the kind of stuff, like, it's to get that knowledge of whatever you're doing out there.
Yeah.
That maybe you don't touch that population unless you're hands-on or you're just looking for extra. You know, you know what I mean, like, so like, like, I, I would like to, if we could, work it out, you know what I mean?
I think Joe made a very, very valid point. I think that you almost need to prioritize from your list.
Yeah.
And, and again, I'm not looking to make this childish where you have to do A, B, I, I'm not looking to do that. There's certain things on this list, a- a- again, and, and, and I, and I see it and, and there's not much left.
Right.
So, now you, it's, it's incumbent upon you to come back.
Do that and then maybe, I mean.
Well, I think it's gonna be a little easier because I, I can tell you, I don't care what you say, I have a real problem with the meats and seafoods. To me, refrigeration, I know you can ice it and so on and so forth, I don't feel comfortable with that and I'm not, I, I just don't want to. I don't even want to entertain meat or seafood, I just, that's just me.
The Board Health allows icing anymore.
Well, I think they.
I don't think so, I think you have, I think you have to refrigerate it.
I think the state, the Board of Health may not have a problem with it, but the state may, so. Well, they, they had a problem with the fish guy and I could tell you.
The fish guy had to get a refrigerated truck.
Yeah, so I could tell you that.
He had to get a new truck.
I don't want to go down that path, I'm just, me, so I don't want to go down that path.
Well, well, just in the one that you just said about community organizations, I could probably be convinced to allow one community organization per, per meeting type thing and put that in.
That's exactly, that's exactly what it is.
I didn't know what it meant initially, I, I couldn't know.
That's why I asked, what does it mean?
Right, yeah, and.
Because again.
So, I mean, that, that's why I think, as Pat said, it's, it's difficult for us to determine what you would want or not want. I think you, I think you, you, you pretty much got a clear understanding that we probably think it's too, there's too many things on here.
Too broad.
It is, you've got to bring it down.
If we got it down to a smaller amount, we could sit and discuss yea or nays, but right now, it's just way too broad and, and maybe this is too much, the ones we crossed out, but if you could come back.
I can.
If you could come back and, and, and say, I really think we need this or this and this is why we wanted to do it, I think we could have that discussion.
And I agree with, I, I am a hundred percent, I mean, absolutely.
Sure, yeah, of course.
And, and I understand what Larry did, we're, I'm just gonna cross it all out. I mean, to, to a certain extent, to me, it would actually.
Five of us that he was dealing with, so it's just easy.
I'm just gonna cross it. So, I mean, I mean, it makes sense, I mean, personally, I would have preferred to see lists because I'm.
Well, that's what you're going to do for us.
And now I'm gonna do the list.
Yeah, you're gonna do the list.
You know, so it's.
Yeah, you're gonna take this list and look at it and what we have said.
I have no problem with it, you know, I, I wish I knew.
My only request, you gonna schedule, you, is this gonna go back on the agenda for next meeting, the end of February or what are you doing, Larry?
Yeah, I, I assumed that we would want to use every available meeting depending upon availability.
The next meeting. My only request is, could you kindly, in advance of the meeting, give a copy to Larry so Larry can email it to us individually? So, we'll, so.
Absolutely.
We're a little more prepared.
Right.
Than sitting here and saying, well, wait a minute, I don't, I, let's fight about the, we're trying to be time-sensitive and be precious.
No, no, absolutely.
To your working, you know, through this, so i- if you've got to give us a little bit of a heads up, it would be helpful.
Yeah, it, you would have gotten the stuff that I gave you.
No, no, no.
That's fine. That's fine.
Forgive me, I was not trying to be critical and believe me.
And, and I'll be more than happy to.
I'm trying to be sensitive to your time, so that's why I'm asking in advance.
I love, I, I've, I've been saying since we started this process, the more feedback we have, the better.
Right, and you got a lot tonight.
And, and that's good.
It is good.
It's like, to a certain extent, I wish I had it before so that we could like chip away at it now versus putting it on now and saying, well, this is the priority for us, what's the priority for you? And we're, you know. So, I mean.
That's great, so now, we're, we're, our next meeting is February?
Seventeenth.
Seventh.
Seven, seventeen, so we'll look forward to seeing you that night and with your list and we'll, we'll get that in our email, so we'll be able to look it over.
Larry and I can get it, I'm sure chopped out, well, well, in advance of that date. Like, we had this one.
Yeah, for last time.
Fourteenth, so, so, I mean, it's.
Okay. So, we're working, yeah, I know it, it's very dry in here.
And, and, I mean, you know, any other thing.
So, you get that together and, and we will see you on the seventeenth of February and we'll go over it then. And then go from there. We have to have a public hearing, obviously, so.
We just want to do the list now or is there anything else that you'd like me to, I, you know, you said you wanted to talk about the, or you want me to. I can work with Mike, I can work with Mike now and see if we can just come up with something that's very.
A letter defined.
Something, just, you know, like some, an agreement that would be pretty, you know.
It needs to be somewhat defined so that we understand the expectations because fortunately, unfortunately, you, you're not a town entity and this is.
I understand.
This is for-profit business, so we, you know, we, we actually have to, we have to look out for the, the interest of the town, that's all.
I completely understand, I, I, you know, I'm a Milford resident, I lived here, I wouldn't, I, I live.
I'm not expecting you to put sod down when you're done.
I live across the street from that school, so trust me when I tell you I don't want there to be any more bear spots on that lawn.
No, and I'm not, like I said, I'm not looking for you to put sod down, but the expectations are that you are. I don't want to be caught in the middle, that's all.
No, no, I just, I, if, I mean, I can certainly talk to Mr. Brashani and see if we can work out something that would at least put you at ease a little bit more, even if it's not something that is completely.
That's perfect.
You know.
It has to do, yeah.
That will get addressed, that will get addressed during the, the site plan.
Right.
Yeah, and I, I just, you know, anything I can do to get us there.
Okay, that's fine. Yes, Larry?
Just so everybody remembers, someone's gonna need to sponsor this and, and depending upon what everybody agrees to do, the warrant, I think, is probably gonna close on March ninth or thereabout. So, that gives us one, two meetings for sure to, to get something put together, to send to the selectmen to, to get it on, to get it on the warrant. So, between now and then, you know, for the May town meeting. So, there, there are some other scheduling things that are, that are coming up that you're gonna, you know, will need to make sure get met, but at the same time, you'll need to determine who's gonna sponsor it, whether, whether the board wants to co-sponsor it or whether the planning board.
I gotta.
Well, I don't know.
I don't have a problem, my only fundamental problem with sponsoring it is, if it's, if it's gonna be on town property or it's gonna be on school property, it's not up to us, it's not up to us to do it because that's.
That's very true.
I prefer the selectmen to try to do it, but.
Again, again, effectively, this is a zoning change. It doesn't have to go on school property.
Doesn't have to be town property.
That's where it may end up at the end, but it, it's, it's a zoning change.
It could go on any.
We can be the sponsor and the other thing I would say is that depending on how this works out, I wouldn't, if, if we are a sponsor, I mean, obviously, you could be a sponsor yourself, but if we, if we were a co-sponsor or the sponsor, I, I'm less worried about, we can get something to the, to the selectmen to put on the warrant. If we have to amend it at, at the town meeting to put on, then that's what we need to do to do it right.
Yeah.
So, if we have to go longer in order to get this ironed out, we can obviously put something on there and then, and then change the.
Before the warrant's printed.
The warrant, yeah. Or we'll change it that night and have it on people's chairs if we have to.
Well, yeah, but.
I mean, I'd rather, yes, I'd rather not, Larry, but I mean, there are, there are mechanisms required. In terms of general comments, though, in here, I guess the only other thing is that I almost think that we should, we should set, that I know we could set the hours as part of our special permit. I'm almost thinking that in here, we should limit the hours to begin with. We can always change that, but, but I think it would be better if it was upfront in the zoning thing as to what we had for hours in here.
I discussed that with Larry, hours and duration as far as.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Again, this isn't necessarily to you, but in theory, there could be another entity that comes in and you're competing with. So, we have to look at this globally, if you will, in the small town of Milford.
Honestly, in one of the drafts, and I, I can go back, I, in one of the drafts, it said, I, and I can't, I can't quote it verbatim.
I'm sure you've had multiple.
There are so many from point eight to now.
Oh, I'm sure.
It said something like, you know, on so many days of the year of, you know, and we, you know, it was, it was, it was the whole first page, first sentence and a half, so, I mean, that's not a problem at all, I mean, we're not, we don't want to move, we don't want to change hours, we don't want to change dates. So, if you said Saturdays from the first of whatever day to the blah, from nine to, or, I mean, our hours are nine to one, we don't allow anyone to start anything before eight. Like, you can show up at seven thirty, but you can't get your stuff out of the car until eight. You know, so if eight to two or three, just because it takes longer to break down than it does to set up, because you're tired by then. Um, you know, that's fine, so, I mean, we can add that.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, I, I think it, it needs to go in here, we can discuss that after it gets in here, as to what we think is right or wrong,